Welcome everyone to the Judiciary Committee hearing this Friday morning, nine fifteen AM agenda. We do have a two minute time limitation for both in person and on Zoom testimony. If we have a, but if you can stay around after your two minutes over, members often have questions. If we have a catastrophic Zoom side failure, we will try again a week from today, which is Friday, the seventh of February at nine thirty AM. So that's our default position if we have technical difficulties, which we almost never do. So I just jinxed it to nine. Okay. All right. First up today is SB Senate Bill one fourteen relating to elections. This would establish a presidential preference primary for the 2028 election and following. First up on SB one fourteen is Scott Nago, Chief Election Officer. Good morning.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on this bill. I'm Scott Nago with the Office of Elections. You have our testimony in front of us, in front of you. You'll, I'm going to stand on it, but just note that there is a cost of four point one million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Glenn Takahashi for the City, Office of the City Clerk, City of Honolulu, with comments. Next is Moana Lute, Office of the County Clerk, County of Maui, also with comments, Alika Valdez for the Democratic Party, the Hawaii Democratic Party, in support, Jamie Detwiler, Hawaiian Island, sorry, Hawaiian Islands Republican Women. Did I see it? Come on up if you, come on up. Good morning.
Morning. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Jamie Detwiler, Hawaiian Islands Republican Women, standing in strong opposition of SB one one four. According to Ballotpedia, presidential preference primary is a primary election in which the voter indicates their preference for the presidential nominee. Caucuses may also be conducted. That's what we're currently conducting. As you well know, the Democrat Presidential Caucus here in Hawaii was successfully executed on March sixth, and the Hawaii Republican Presidential Caucuses were held on March twelfth, primarily manned by volunteers who are basically very patriotic and take pride in putting these caucuses on. They are held at community schools, public schools, and again manned by volunteers. So just wanted to let everybody know who doesn't already know that. That's how we're conducting it. Therefore, Hawaiian Islands Republican Women, we are in opposition for this because the control cited in this bill is now shifting from the parties over to the state to run this. SB one one four will replace our in-person presidential primaries with mail-in ballots. The cost to conduct the in-person presidential primaries were carried by the parties. They're currently carried by the parties. SB one one four will be cost prohibitive as these are the budget allocations requested in this bill from all four counties totaling one point seven million dollars from our general revenues, revenues of the state. And the 2024 Hawaii Republican Presidential Caucus was a mere fraction of the cost of this proposed budget allocation. I do not have the cost of the Hawaii Democrat Presidential Caucus, but I don't think it was even close to a million.
Thank you very much.
It will be better spent on homeless programs and underserved communities. Please exercise fiscal responsibility and common sense. Thank you for this opportunity.
Next up is Amy Monk for League of Women Voters. In support, Mark Healy on Zoom perhaps? Mark Healy on Zoom? I'm sorry, Mary, I'm sorry. How did I get Mark out of that? Mary, I apologize. Go ahead. But you are muted. Please proceed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Yes, you can. Okay, it's a little hard for me to hear you. I assume that this is for SB one four four.
Yes.
I'm here to oppose this.
One one four, sorry, one one four.
Um, I'm strong, I'm here to strongly oppose this bill. Based on the fact that at the first filing, I'm so sorry, at the first filing, the chief election officer or clerk may reject the candidate's nomination for lack of sufficient signers who are eligible to vote for the candidate. How can the chief election officer or clerk be making this decision? On pages ten, section five, and pages fourteen, section B. My question is, will Scott Nago use his own opinion as he did, giving testimony to enter the state into Eric, regardless of the recommendation of the Election Commission? To hand over our data to a private company, it seems a lot of, like a lot of power and more responsibility to the election, the chief elections officer that many, including myself, have been requesting the Election Commission to fire. Passing this bill will give control of independent presidential caucuses with hand count, hand counted paper ballots to date at the expense of the people. That's unacceptable. Also, primaries need not be run, in my opinion, by fail universal mail-in ballot systems that have been, have inflated voter rolls, which many citizens have testimony against in the Election Commission's meeting. The political parties of the state can.
Okay. I'm not sure what happened. You have thirty seconds. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, you're back. You have thirty seconds left.
Okay, the money that this bill has, could be used for other things. We have disaster-related expenses, including the Maui fires and of course, the Poheke Bay boat ramp. It's just a waste of money, and I ask you all to vote no on this bill for these reasons that I've cited. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thanks very much. That is everyone else, that's everyone who signed up to be here in person or in Zoom. I have a long list of testifiers, but is there anyone else who wishes to testify on Zoom or in person? Please come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Walin Christian. I actually live in your district, Senator Rhodes. I'm in strong opposition of Bill one one four. Two main things, and I know you're probably going to hear it over and over by other people. If we look at Article two, section four, excuse me. Article two, section four, and I said this in the Elections Commission, that number one, I'm going to go a little bit offbeat with this. There was a preemptive asking about Republican and Democrat. Okay, that's number one. So that doesn't really pertain to this, but I wanted to bring that up. Article one, section one of the Hawaii Constitution, and I'm going to read it verbiage, verbatim. "All political power of this state is inherent in the people and the responsibility for the exercise thereof rests with the people. All government is founded on this authority." So basically what I'm trying to say is that if we give one man power, we don't know if he's going to do what's best for the people and according to the law. Two, experienced with Mr. Nago in the Elections Commission's hearings, he never followed what the people wanted, and that's a problem. So that's him. Now, if we give it back to the state, it's the same issuance. Right now, what I want to say is, what we need to do is get back to the people, and we've said this for years already. I'm very strong in Elections Commissions. I get there every chance I get to testify on behalf of the people. So what I would like to ask is that you folks see this and understand that it needs to go back to the people and not the states. Ayo, thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else like to testify in person or on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. So the count was eleven in support, forty-one opposed with three comments. That was the total overall. And I'm not sure the last testifier might, that might made it forty-two against. Okay, members, questions on SB one one four?
Sorry.
Senator Simon Troy, go ahead.
Scott Nago. Um, so we used to have special elections whenever someone died or retired. And but because of cost, we made it to the special elections coincided with our regular elections. Do you remember that?
I, I remember in my time in elections, the only special elections we were required to conduct was for the federal US representative seat because the Constitution says it cannot be filled by appointment. So I believe the law is set up so that it can be either held as a standalone or in conjunction with. But I don't recall any other seat where it used to be especially like maybe county, but that wouldn't be us.
Okay, so it, it shows my age then, but we used to have special elections whenever somebody retired. There would be an appointment and the interim, and then there would be special elections when somebody retired or resigned or, or died in office.
So I, I'm not sure if you're referring to like a state senate seat where you would have an appointment up until the next election, which would be midterm of the.
No, but that's, so the law changed until it became. You don't remember.
I don't recall that.
Okay, so my question then is, what would the cost be if we timed this presidential preference poll with an actual election, like either the November before or the, the regular primaries?
So, um, given the four point one million figure I gave you, all that would disappear except for possibly voter education because it's a new type of election.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a follow-up question. So our current primary is in August, August, what's the date, eighth or something like?
Second Saturday in August.
And one of the national conventions?
I don't think it's set by a schedule, and I think, I'm not sure. I think it's set by the parties for that. I don't think there's any specified date that it's also on the.
They just determine when they, when they want to do it. Okay, my recollection, it's in July, July and or August usually. So how much time, how much time after an election would you need? I mean, of course, it, for presidential, for preference primaries, it's what the party rules are. So they don't even have to, they don't have to, you don't have to weigh the results of the presidential primary at all in terms of, of allocating delegates to their conventions. But how much time would you think you would need to have between the convention and a presidential primary election for it to, to get everything taken care of?
So right now, you have your contest for cause period after the primary election, which, which candidates can file, and then it's up to the Supreme Court when they rule, and they really don't, I believe they have a timeline, but when they rule.
Okay, maybe I ask a different question. When, when is an election typically certified after the day of the election?
It's usually certified, um, we certify the results in a primary election after we add in the cured ballots, which would be approximately about a week after.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? If not, thank you very much. We're going to move on. Next up is SB seven twenty-five. This requires judges to make certain findings regarding a defendant's ability to afford bail. First on seven twenty-five is Jennifer Along, Staff Attorney, Criminal Division for the Judiciary. Good morning.
Morning Chair, good morning Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jennifer Along, and I'm the staff attorney for the Criminal Administrative Divisions of the Circuit Court of the First Circuit. We stand on our written testimony. I'd just like to explain a little bit. Basically, we are asking that this matter be deferred. As you all know, the, last year, there was a penal code review bill established, and the Judicial Council is concurrently conducting the penal code review as required by Act two forty-five. Included in the penal code review as one of the subcommittees is a subcommittee on Chapter eight oh four specifically on pretrial bail reform. Their report is due to the legislature at the end of this year. So any, if this were to go forward now, that it may interfere or may cross over with whatever it is that they are doing. So we would ask for that. If the matter is not going to be deferred, we just make a few comments with respect to where this, this is being placed in the statutory scheme. Under eight oh four dash nine, that is how bail is, is established throughout a criminal case, including at the initial bail setting. The initial bail setting is set by judges and also officers, either sheriffs or police officers when an individual is originally arrested on, without a warrant. There is no on-the-record proceeding in those cases. The only exception to that is the grand jury proceeding, and that is on the record. So those, that information is there. However, the defendant is not present. If these changes are going to be adopted, we would just recommend that they be put either in eight oh four dash seven point five, which already has a bail hearing set. It will add additional factors for what is required for that prompt bail hearing, which is required and is had either at the initial appearance or at the arraignment or both, or that it be placed in a standalone statutory provision that basically would apply to any time there is an on-the-record determination or review of bail.
Your time has expired. Thank you, but I will have questions for you, so please hang around. Thanks. Next up is Tricia Nakamatsu for Deputy Attorney General, Deputy Attorney General. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General Tricia Nakamatsu, appearing on behalf of the department. We did submit testimony comments noting that although we understand the concerns indicated in section one of the bill, the rest of the bill appears, the approach that's taken seems to raise several issues that may arise in practice. One, that sheriffs and police may be precluded from releasing anyone on bail, given the language of section eight oh four dash five, which would normally allow them to do so. But as noted by the judiciary just before me, they are unable to make findings on the record. So thus would have a difficult time if they're included as a bail judge. Two, some defendants may be held longer to obtain a pretrial bail report that is also pertaining to the initial holding, which is often done overnight or over the weekend in district court cases, which is petty misdemeanors and misdemeanors if somebody is arrested and unable to make bail from the officers and police sheriff. Three, the requirement on page five, lines four through seven regarding explaining why no alternatives or less restrictive financial or non-financial restrictions will suffice, maybe unfeasible, given heavy caseloads, given the fact that much of eight oh four dash seven point one subsections one through twelve likely will not apply or have really any bearing on the vast majority of cases. We do note an alternative. And language is provided if the committee would like to consider amending eight oh four dash nine to basically do exactly what section one seems to want the bill to do, which is to require the courts to make inquiry regarding defendant's financial circumstances and to then make a record of the inquiry, the response, as well as the justices or judges or officers' consideration thereof. Finally, we note in addition on page three, number, lines four, State B Carter is already good law. So technically, what the bill is asking to do is already in State B Carter.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Kristen Johnson, or Coordinator for Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission.
It takes longer to say the name than testify. My name is Martha Torni, and I'm one of the commissioners with the Oversight Commission. We support this bill in that the use of cash bail disproportionately impacts low-income offenders or individuals, and it can disrupt employment, housing, family stability, creating lasting economic and social hardship. I also want to bring to your attention that research has shown again and again that if you have two similarly situated people, and one can afford to bail out and one cannot, their crimes are very similar, their criminal history, if they have any is similar, that when it comes, if they're both convicted, the one who has had held pretrial is far more likely to get an incarcerated sentence than the person who was out on bail. They get probation more often. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sunny Gaden Aiden for Office of Public Defender. Morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Senators Kongi Fatroy.
Kongi Fatroy.
Yeah. This bill adds a formal discussion with the defendant about the use of money in obtaining freedom. In regards to the judiciary's response, you know, I counted four reports given to the legislature in the last decade regarding bail. This issue is difficult to get before the Supreme Court because it's pretrial, of course. So the wording of HRS eight oh four dash nine, which requires that the court set bail based on all available information, that's just tough to get in front of a court. You need to wait till the completion of the trial. So we depend on the legislature to finally fix this. In regard to the testimony of the Office of the Attorney General, again, you know, we have a lot of due process at the back end in sentencing. We need more due process at the front end. This adds that. This adds a formal discussion with a defendant, which we think will assist defendants in coming to court in knowing the gravity of their charge, in having a judge have the opportunity to converse with them about why they need to keep showing up. We support.
Thank you. Next is Kelvin Walden, prosecuting attorney for Hawaii County in opposition. Kat Brady, Coordinator for Community Alliance on Prisons. Good morning.
Morning, committee. Kat Brady testifying for Community Alliance on Prisons in strong support of this bill. You know, I've met a lot of people who couldn't even pay ten to fifty dollars in bail. I mean, they couldn't even come up with that. And I looked at the latest issuance of the population report, and we have like nine hundred nine people who are pretrial detainees. That costs us two hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars a day, and eight million dollars a month, and a staggering a hundred and two million dollars a year. So this is a lot of money that we could actually be using to provide services that people lack, and, and that sends them to incarceration. We really believe that there's better things we could be doing. The community has been fighting for many years to eliminate cash bail because justice should not depend on how much money you have. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up is Louis Urdechik for the Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support. Nathan Lee, Policy Legislative Fellow for the ACLU. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Yeah, ACLU of Hawaii is in strong support of this bill. We have a few amendments, but just to go through, those amendments largely are to make this bill and its companion align with House Bill one twenty-seven, which has similar aims. So, so the first kind of difference we want to point out is just amending eight oh fours nine to have more specific requirements of how bail is being set. And so House Bill one twenty-seven as to, requires the court to exclude any public benefits as from being considered income. And it also says that if a person, their income is not to be less than a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level, they should be considered unable to pay bail, and the judges should act accordingly. And so we think that this kind of sets pretty clear standards on ability to pay and provides a little bit more guidance for judges and decision makers when setting bail. The other amendment is amending eight oh four dash four to include that the court should enter on its record its written findings on why the conditions imposed are, are necessary to protect the public and also to ensure the defendant's appearance. Want to note that this language about how the court should be making decisions is already in eight oh four dash four, but this additional sentence, if added, would hold the court to actually enacting the existing requirement. So happy to answer any questions about that. And yeah, ACLU is in support with amendments.
Thank you. Next up is Michael Older with comments. Carla Allison in support. Jacob Winecheck in opposition. Rita Kama Kimura in opposition. Judy Chang in opposition. Andrew Crossland in opposition. R. Al Souza in opposition, and Veronica Moore in support. That's all the written testimony submitted on SB seven twenty-five. Would anyone else like to testify on SB seven twenty-five? Seeing none. Members, questions? I do have a question for the judiciary. Ms. Along, sorry, that's what I was trying to come up with, what's your last name?
No problem. I don't look like an Along.
So, um, I guess when bail is initially done, I understand that under the current, and it's not, it's, it's, it's not clear to me, is there, and there must be some record of what the bail was set at because otherwise, how would anybody, I mean, how would you proceed from there, right? Or is, is it all oral?
Well, there's a warrant. So if a warrant goes out, so on information charges, some complaint charges and grand jury charges, a warrant will go out, and that warrant has the bail amount set. District Court sets bail, district court judges set bail for information charges and for complaints, and then the circuit court sets.
Okay, so that's situations where there's a warrant, but what about ones where you're, you're, I don't know, you're picked up for DUI and you're brought to the police station? Isn't there a bail determination made?
The police officers determine bail on anything that's less than two years. If the punishment is less than two years, they usually set.
Misdemeanors, okay, and below. So, but what's the record of that decision? Is there a record of that decision?
So what happens is those are, ends up being complaint cases, or it really depends on the prosecutor. The prosecutor can move forward on it via complaint.
But I guess my question is even more basic than that. So how does the prosecutor even know what the bail was set at?
Because they get the packet from the police officers.
Okay, so there is paper. There is.
Yeah, and it gets filed in the case.
Or some electronic transfer of some kind.
For, for in complaint cases, judicial determination of probable cause is filed, which has that information in it. And then in info charge cases, there's an actual information packet.
Okay, so why can't there be some, is there any, is there anything in that packet that explains the rationale for why bail was set, where it was set at that initial stage?
From the police officers? I don't believe so. I, I, I would have to check, but I don't believe that.
This seems like a fairly major, I mean, this is a, this is a potentially life-altering.
I mean, that is the record. So there's no on-the-record hearing, though, where we would make an inquiry of the defendant.
Somebody sets bail.
Correct.
And they have to have, I mean, they, they, at least in their own brains, they have to have some reason for why they set the bail at that, at that level.
Yes, and then that is reviewed by the judge once we go.
But it's not written down anywhere? This, this is why, what I'm driving at is, is there no record of, other than the fact that we said, okay, bail's a hundred dollars. There's no other record saying bail is set at a hundred dollars because that's what the, that's what the matrix says, or.
I, I don't believe so, but I would have to check with HPD how, how they do that. I don't believe they have a matrix.
Because that, to me, just seems really remarkable, because if you can't make, if that, if that bail amount stays and they can't make it, you could be in O triple C for six months because.
No, no, no. So those bail decisions are immediately reviewed. They have to bring, so on any warrantless arrest, they have to bring the defendant within forty-eight hours.
At arraignment, so then in arraignment.
The initial appearance, but yes.
Initial appearance, okay, so.
So then the judge will make that decision. So that's what I'm saying. The eight oh, the eight oh four dash seven point five hearing is that hearing that happens either at initial arraignment or initial appearance or at arraignment or both. So that is the on-the-record hearing.
Okay, but there's already, but there's already a baseline been set. I, I don't know what the stats are on how, how often the judge deviates from what the initial police officer said. That would be very interesting.
So those are, I mean, I observe arraignment and plea at circuit court quite often. When the defense attorney, so that's where we have our bail hearings under seven point five. The defense attorney will either ask for bail reduction, supervised release, or they will say that they are not going to, that they're going to take it up with the trial judge at that time. And then the judge goes through the information available to them. The defense attorney presents what they want, and that is when that is reviewed, and the judge will either reduce bail, will grant supervised release, or will keep bail the same. Sometimes they may raise bail, depending on the information.
So at that stage, then the judge, is there something?
That is all on the record.
It's all on the record, but is there actually an explanation of why, why he or she kept the bail at the level that they did?
Generally, I mean, they, they're announcing their, their decision. So yes, generally speaking, they, they would say, we're, I believe that this is fair and reasonable under eight oh four dash nine or, or whatever.
Okay.
Things they took into account, based on all the information available.
Okay, thank you. Members, other questions?
Yes, I do. So Ms. Along.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that the chair is aware of, although I am in favor of this bill. The judge also, at the initial appearance, is also being given a bail study, usually by, I don't know, probation officer.
I S E.
The I S C, right?
Intake Service Center.
Right. And in that intake service center report, because I've seen it as a defense attorney. It shows income, addresses, where the ad whether or not there's a supervisor who is willing to be able to, correct?
So the intake service center presents a pre-trial bail report. Sometimes those are not available at initial appearance. In fact, a lot of times they aren't. They were required to give it to us within three working days. So initial appearance generally happens before that. But that is usually available at arraignment. There are exceptions to when I S C does not have to give us a pre-trial bail report. So there are certain things I've outlined them in the testimony. Excuse me, in the testimony. However, the in intake service center report is provided to us and it gives us the information that the defendant has given them. So yes, there is information. It it has a statement for employment. It says yes or no. It has a statement for how they support themselves. Generally speaking, that says either employment or it says unemployed or it says cash jobs sometimes. And it also will have any address. It's basically, it's totally based on the information the defendant gives. So if the defendant provides that information, it is in there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one other question. So if if that's, if that's how it actually works in practice, I'm not doubting you. I'm just you know, so if 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 that's the way it works in practice, then why would this bill make any difference? I mean, it would just be reinforcing what's already done.
Uh, as I stated in our testimony, we do disagree with the preamble. We believe that we are in compliance at this point. I I understand the concerns that they want specifically orally statements from the judges as to why they're keeping the bail as it is, or why they're raising the bail, or why they're denying any release. I I don't believe that it would make much of a difference personally. However, I I understand the the issue, but I but I really think that if they want to do this, it should be in that other section or in a standalone section because eight oh four dash nine is just not nothing happens on the record before a judge in those types of proceedings initially. If a if a person violates supervised release and they get picked up on a on a on a warrant, they come back in and we can discuss bail again at that point. And that there the the judges are obligated under those provisions of chapter eight oh four to review those things and determine bail based on that. So I would say there's more than eight oh four dash nine is just not the place for these provisions to be in if you're going to go forward with it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Gannon, can you mind coming up? So are you are you familiar with this process? I mean, have you represented people in this situation?
Yes, I've been an attorney since two thousand and eight. First as a court appointed attorney, then now with opposite public defender. So I make these appearances, yes.
Okay, so what do you have any quibbles with the way the judiciary representative described this?
Absolutely. There needs to be more time uh, in order for the judge to make a determination. We can simply slow this process down. And there's not going to be any issues with rule forty-eight speedy trial rights because you can just hold that against the defendant. The judge can simply say, I'm gonna take another couple of days to take a look at this. I'm gonna wait till I get a bail report. I would like some more information from the defendant or the defendant's family regarding his or her ability to.
But isn't playing devil's advocate for a minute, isn't that part of the problem here is that it does get slowed down and people just sit at O triple C while they wait for the?
Slowing it down for a couple of days is very different from uh, being held pre-trial based off of a bail report created basically on a whim by a police officer and then supported by the court due to the high volume of cases that we see in district courts.
Okay, so you're you're arguing that, oh, I'm only putting words in your mouth. So what what what's your experience been with? The the initial bail set by the police officer compared to what it ends up being in the end?
Matters on the court. So and it also matters on the district. Turns out Hawaii Island seems to be really in support of its officers and their initial setting of bail. Uh, here in Honolulu, they tend to be more lenient and be in um, agreement with allowing an individual to be released. I think that has to do with services, to be honest. Um, and like the broader universe in context that we have about like an ability, not just an ability to pay, but like an individual's ability to get mental health services or to have like a support in the community, that kind of thing.
Uh, thank you very much. Any other questions for this? Okay. Uh, Ms. Nakamura, do you mind coming up again? Did I say that wrong? Nakamatsu, sorry. Sorry. So what you suggested for your amendments? Are you contemplating something on something written or some some recorded?
Uh, I believe the language that we suggested could be either, as long as there is a record of it.
Okay, so either orally or written, you don't care, just as long as you can obtain it.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And I'm sorry, if I may, just as far as putting anything in eight oh four dash seven point five, we can take another look at that if the committee is inclined to to go with that section instead.
All right, thank you. Okay, members, other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and move on. Uh, next up is SB seven thirty-three proposing amendments to the Hawaii State Constitution to establish continuous legislative session. Uh, first up on SB seven thirty-three is uh, Evan Weber, Managing Director for our Hawaii. Uh, in support, oh, it's in person, no. In support, Anne Frederick, Executive Director of Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. Also in support, Susan B. Roberts, Emery Co-Chair, Green Party of Hawaii. In support. Doug Matsooka, Co-Founder, Hawaii Gorilla Video Hui. In support. Anne Safré on Zoom, maybe?
They're not available on Zoom chair.
Okay, in support, Aria Juliet Castillo. Also on Zoom. Good morning.
Aloha Chair Rhodes, Chair Gabbard, and members of the committee. Thank you so much for considering one of the many bills introduced this year to aim to expand the legislative session from sixty days to year round or continuous model. I'm no stranger to following the legislature, but this is the first year I've been hired part-time as an advocate. And I'm astonished at the pace by which these hearings are being held. The current process is completely unsustainable for anyone who's not financially compensated to participate. This is unfair to the general public, most of whom are working right now and couldn't afford to take last minute time off to testify or even have the time to submit testimony in the brief window that it was able to be accepted. A fundamental principle of democracy is that all eligible citizens should have an equal say in lawmaking. Expanding to a year-round model would not only allow greater public participation, but it would also give lawmakers more time to collaborate on legislation, preventing the introduction of multiple similar bills. Additionally, we could provide legislators with full-time salary that reflects the full-time responsibilities required of them. This change would also allow neighbor island lawmakers to better balance their time between serving in the Capitol and being present in their communities rather than just being away from their families for four months. Many good government reforms that advocates have been calling out for could be easily implemented under a year-round model. The biggest reason we often hear why reforms can't happen is that there is no time. If we can restructure the legislative calendar, we can remove that time clock and create more access, more transparency, and more effective system. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have many other testifiers. Only one other has signed up for Zoom or in person, and that is Mary Healy. Are you still there? Yep.
Hi, hi. Um, hi, I'm here in opposition to SB seven thirty-three. I I believe that the Hawaii State Government has operated effectively thus far. Um, a year-round legislation will increase costs significantly for taxpayers. This bill also makes it harder for people to participate because the window of time legislation is in session has been historically known by the citizens. The most pressing issues can already be handled through special sessions, making a full-time legislative body excessive and will increase taxes for the Kamaaina residents and the Kanaka Native Hawaiians of the state who have already been leaving the uh, leaving Hawaii due to the state having the highest cost of living in the USA. Um, public participation where citizens can engage intensively over a shorter period is easier for families and individuals. Um, extending the session will dilute public involvement and only pay politicians more. Um, creating a separate class within the state. That's counterproductive for prosperity for the citizens. I want to say thank you for listening to my testimony and I please strongly encourage you to vote no on this.
Thank you very much. Thanks for hanging around. Um, that's everybody that I have who's signed up for Zoom or in person. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on SB seven thirty-three? Yep, please come up.
Yes, I just missed my name. Sorry about that.
Yes, you were first in on the list.
All right. Aloha, my Kako, Evan Weber here today representing our Hawaii. We are a grassroots political movement of people from all across the islands. We have thirty-eight thousand supporters. I want to mahalo the Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify today. Uh, we are in strong support of this measure and mahalo Senator Rhodes for introducing it again this year, or maybe someone else did, but whoever introduced it, great, or Senator Chang, maybe. Yeah. Just want to echo a lot of what Aria said. The current structure of the legislature, the pace is extremely fast and it makes it really hard for uh, ordinary working people, particularly the working class, to keep up. It's almost impossible to follow uh, the rapid flurry of hearings and opportunities to testify, let alone have the opportunity to come around and be in this building if you're an ordinary working person, if you're a janitor or a teacher, a farmer, fisherman. Uh, so that means that a lot of who gets the opportunity to have their voices heard ends up being the professional class. So this is an issue about economic justice and representation and whose voices are heard at the legislature. It also tips the scales towards, of course, paid lobbyists who have their voices heard more often. I do also believe that this would benefit you all as legislators by allowing for more time for thoughtful deliberation, allowing the opportunity for budget impacts to be more thoroughly uh, considered and understood when you're voting on bills. And yeah, it will also allow the legislature to have the opportunity to operate under the sunshine law like many other uh, bodies do by allowing for more time in between deliberations. So this would also increase the opportunities for transparency and accountability from the public. So strong support of this measure. I worked as an advocate in Washington DC for a number of years where we there is year year-round legislation. I was shocked when I got into this process here about the pace of everything.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB seven thirty-three? SB seven thirty-three. Okay, members, questions? Interesting one. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess the last speaker. Mr. Webber. You said you've worked in Washington before?
Yes, eight years, eight and a half years.
And and you know, I'm looking at your testimony. You are aware that most states are part-time legislators.
It's a mix, yes, but there are many states with part-time.
I just did a balopiget look and it looks like only nine states have full-time legislators. So we're looking at the majority more like four out of five states are part-time. And in fact, Maine has or New Mexico has only thirty days.
Right.
And that's all I want to point out because I disagree with the preamble. I understand the reasons. But I disagree with the the preamble saying that this state of Hawaii implication that the state of Hawaii has has the shortest legislative session. So thank you.
Oh, I don't I don't think I said that in.
No, you didn't.
Okay.
The preamble.
Okay. Yeah. But yeah, I mean, many, as you noted, other states do have year-long legislatures and it should be noted that the counties, of course, all have year-long deliberation and bill making as well, so.
But the counties, county council people actually live in the district where they work.
Yeah.
Whereas like me, I work in a very different island than where my constituents are. And my constituents who are normally whose income is less than, I mean, the the per capita income is is high and it's very low on the AMI scale. They can't afford to see me at the Capitol. So for people like me, I'm actually more influenced with the people, with the lobbyists who know the legislative schedule and who come to the building. And that's the reason why I take advantage of the seven, eight, the eight months of the year to actually meet with my constituents. So thank you very much.
Yeah, mahalo for your perspective as well.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill. Which is SB seven seven eight. It's changed the age for which individuals are eligible for life without parole sentences from eighteen years of old age to twenty-one years of age. First up on SB seven seven eight is Darcia Forster for the public defender.
Bring again Chair Vice Chair Sonny Gannon on behalf of my colleagues, Ms. Forster. Uh, we are talking about the most serious charge in the Hawaii law statutes and for many human beings, what is uh, the most serious charge that a human being can face, you know, murder in the first degree. We believe that there should be incentives to good behavior for inmates. Um, you know, human beings, even murderers deserve um, an opportunity to redress their wrongs. Uh, we'd also like to note that oftentimes these charges inclusive of the twenty-year minimum, they have aggravating factors. So an individual who's charged with murder in the first degree is often in for many decades. Uh, this gives them an opportunity to redress their crimes, to become better human beings and to hopefully re-enter society. With what we know about the way the human brain works, we believe that the eighteen-year designation was arbitrary in the first place and that twenty-one years is the appropriate way to set it up in the twenty-first century.
Thanks very much. Next up is Robe Becca-Like, prosecuting attorney for Kauai County with comments. Victor Ramos in opposition, Mary Healy on Zoom. Morning again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, okay, I'm in opposition to this bill. Life without parole is not issued lightly by a judge. It's usually for a horrendous crime. Um, in the bill, a person's brain is not fully developed by the age of twenty-one, yet Hawaii passed into law last year that a minor of fourteen years old may consent to an abortion and the lifelong complications that that medical procedure can create without the consent of a guardian. Further, a minor can also consent to STD treatment at fourteen years old, but the state is drawing a line in the sand for mental capacity for the most horrendous crime an individual can commit. In the state of Hawaii, you also can be sixteen years old with the consent of a guardian to get married. Um, while the state has changed the legal scale for alcohol and the purchase of tobacco to the age of twenty-one, an individual must meet rigorous criteria to obtain a medical marijuana card um, under the age of eighteen, um, with the consent again of a guardian. I fear the wording of this bill where we'll encourage gangs to recruit younger individuals to carry out crimes like murder or as a proxy for other illegal activities. Uh, the bill remains unclear as to how an individual at the age of twenty-one was settled upon as a suitable age when sentencing somebody to life without parole. It implies the brain is not mature. Yet all these examples I listed show that we are saying that the brain is mature for a lot of different things in the state of Hawaii. So I oppose this bill strongly. Mental maturity by the state to make life-altering decisions, as I've said, is ambiguous. So please vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Veronica Moore. Also in opposition. That's everybody who signed up on SB seven seven eight. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB seven seven eight in person or in Zoom? Seeing on members' questions? Hey, uh, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is SB seven eighty to specify that election ballots issued by the chief election officer, county clerk shall exclude any candidate who is disqualified um, by constitutional or statutory provision. This is for state offices only. Provides a process for challenging an inclusion or exclusion of a candidate from the ballot. First up on seven eighty is Janet Mason, possibly on Zoom. Good morning.
Morning Chair Rhodes. Vice Chair Gabbard, members of the committee. On testifying on behalf of the League of Women Voters, we support this bill, which is an important safeguard so that people who are ineligible by virtue of the section three of the Fourteenth Amendment of the Federal Constitution, which has to do with insurrection, or article sixteen, section three of the state constitution. sixteen, section three of the state constitution, which refers to those that public officers take to affirm their commitment to both the US Constitution and the state constitution. If people are ineligible by virtue of these laws, not subscribing to these laws, they shouldn't appear on our state ballots. Neither should they serve as state electors for federal, the presidential or vice presidential election. Thank you very much for taking up this issue and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Next is Alica Valdez for the Hawaii Democratic Party. Incidentally, there isn't, just for the record, there is no Democrat Party in Hawaii. It's the Hawaii Democratic Party is the proper name. Anyway, in support, Jamie Detwiler for Hawaiian Islands Republican Women. Good morning again.
Aloha. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. Jamie Detwiler, Hawaiian Islands Republican Women. Our organization, as well as the National Federation of Republican Women, are committed to building leaders, energizing communities, and keeping America strong. Our objectives include informing the public through political and legislative education, as well as protecting the integrity of our electoral process. Part of protecting the integrity of our process is allowing citizens to vote for who the candidate is of their choice. I support those who do not comply with the Fourteenth Amendment. These are people who seriously break the law. They should not be able to run for office. So I agree on that point of the bill. When candidates file an application with the Office of Elections, they have to attest to complying with the state law and in federal case, in federal races, with federal law. I'm opposed to this bill because SB seven eighty provides for a process that challenges the inclusion and exclusion. It also proposes that electors of presidential and vice presidential candidates be determined by the legislature. Again, determined by the legislature. This is government overreach. In the twenty-twenty-four legislature, SB twenty-three ninety-two attempted to give the same power to the chief elections officer and the county elections clerks. That bill did not pass. In twenty-twenty-five, SB seventy-eighty proposes to give the power to the legislature, the ability to determine who will be disqualified based on the Fourteenth Amendment. Section three. With all due respect, according to constitutional scholars, may I remind the Chair and this Committee to disqualify a candidate under the Fourteenth Amendment? You must follow a federal statute on insurrection and rebellion, a criminal statute, and get criminal conviction. Please do not take action that will result in depriving the people of Hawaii of their right to vote. Remember, Article one, section one of the Constitution. Thank you.
Opposition, Andrew Crossland in opposition. I have quite a number of other people mostly in opposition. I'll give you the accounts in a minute, but Mary Healy is, yes, there you are. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for hearing my testimony. I strongly oppose this bill, which is just a redundant, hyper-politicalized attempt from another failed bill from last year that attempted to keep President Donald Trump off the ballot in Hawaii, referencing the Fourteenth Amendment. Really, in my opinion, the purpose of this bill is nothing more than a partisan election interference campaign, just like the Russiagate scandal, which was a coordinated disinformation campaign conducted by the FBI, the Clinton Foundation, the Clinton campaign, I'm sorry, the fake news mafia and the elected Democrats to take down the Republican nominee for president through false claims. Further, this is just a waste of time for the legislative session and an embarrassment to we the people. Again, another bill failed last year to pass, and I ask you again to vote no. If the legislation is going to waste time on such bills, then this gives credibility to my testimony earlier for SB seven thirty-three. President Donald Trump also won the twenty-twenty-four election with the popular vote and all the swing states. This hyper-politicalization is a threat to American freedom. I urge all the members of this Committee to vote no on this bill and to be mindful of your obligations to we the people. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone who has signed up for Zoom or in person. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB seven eighty? Hey, seeing none, the count was three in support, forty-two opposed, and one comment. Okay, members, questions on SB seven eighty? Okay, so let me see if I have any. Nope, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is SB seven eighty-eight. This establishes a two-year pilot program in the probate court and family court of the First Circuit, which is Oahu, to fund certain guardianship and conservatorship related court resources in situations where the respondent does not have sufficient funds to pay for one or more of the resources. First up on seven eighty-eight. First up on seven eighty-eight is Dancy Bartoldis, Executive Administrator for the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Good morning.
Aloha, Chair, Committee members. My name is Chase Silver. I'm with the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. I'm here for Dancy Bartoldis, my boss. We're testifying specifically in our capacity as the facilitator of a working group that was created in twenty-twenty-three by Representative Tarnus. We were tasked with looking at the, there was a uniform law measure that was, that was going through, and we were trying to assess whether or not the state would be applicable to use a uniform law on guardianship and what we could do to do that. Our group quickly shifted its focus to specifically looking at different issues that guardianship and conservatorship faced in Hawaii, and our group has been meeting for over a year now to discuss those types of issues. And one of the key issues that came from our group discussion was that there needs to be more equity and tools that can be used in guardianship and conservatorship, and our group worked to produce this measure. And in the discussions, we kind of come up with, this was a targeted way of enhancing equity and the information that judges could use in guardianship and conservatorship cases. I just really quickly wanted to highlight, we are in, we offered comments just due to the nature of the makeup for our working group. But the overall discussion of the group was in favor of this measure.
Okay, thank you. Next up is our Judges Jeanette Castagnetti and Diane Maderos for the judiciary in support. Purbe Shaw, Executive Director for Disability and Communication Access Board in support. Louis Erdechek, Hawaii Disability Rights Center with comments. Randy Lynn Makalani Hayden, Executive Director for Infinite Reach. Apo Akia in support. Desiree Takub in support, Elizabeth Kent in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB seven eighty-eight. Does anyone else wish to testify on this? Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Colin Gu. I'm an attorney in private practice and part of our practice is in conservatorship and guardianship. I am a member of the Committee on the Uniform Probate Code and Probate Court Practices Committee, more commonly known as the Probate Committee. So if we have a discussion on the Probate Committee, that is how I would respond. I am also a member of the working group that Representative Tarnus established, of which the previous speaker just shared with you. We consider Shay our chairman despite the appointment or establishment by Representative Tarnus. I am here on behalf of the Probate Committee. And we are in support. I believe that Judge Castagnetti and Judge Maderos submitted the testimony as cited by Senator Rhodes. I am here to respond to questions with the, at the request of Mr. Silver and also with the permission of Judge Castagnetti and Judge Maderos.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anyone else wish to testify on SB seven eighty-eight, seven eighty-eight? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? I don't have any questions, so the Committee's indulgence will move on to SB eight oh nine. SB eight oh nine relates to campaign contributions. It prohibits state or county grantees, officers, and immediate family members of state or county contractors and officers and immediate family members of state or county grantees from contributing to candidate committees and non-candidate committees for the duration of the contract. First up on eight oh nine is Bonnie Kahakui, Administrator for the State Procurement Office with comments. Next is Gary Cam, Counsel for Campaign Spending Commission. Morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. My name is Gary Cam and I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. The Commission supports this bill based on comments made in past years when this bill came up. The Commission would recommend that the definition of owner be those that own at least five percent, have five percent stake in the in the company.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Beppe Shapiro, Legislative Committee for the League of Women Voters of Hawaii. In support, Beatrice Dorigo for Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus. Also in support, Evan Weber, Managing Director, R Hawaii. Oh, there you are. Again.
Hello again. Uh, yeah, mahalo for the opportunity to testify in this legislation and for the Campaign Spending Commission for introducing it. Stand by the written testimony, but just wanted to speak to the facts and remind the public and legislators that this is a real problem. It was documented at the end of last session. There was an article that came out in the New York Times that noted that legislators at a very high level were taking advantage of this loophole and that contractors were, in fact, participating in late-night parties at top of buildings in Honolulu, stacking envelopes with cash and performing pay-to-play activities. So this is a real problem and the legislature, because that expose was released late in the session last year, didn't really have time to react it, but we're at the start of a new session now, and so there's an opportunity to respond, and I hope that the legislature will pass this bill or consider other similar ones that have been introduced like it to take action on this serious issue of pay-to-play corruption in our politics and restore the public trust that has been violated by some of these exposes and the behaviors that have come to light. So this is a good thing for the legislature and it'll be a good thing for the public to improve both our actual politics and the public trust that's been lost. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Anne Saferi on Zoom, perhaps?
They're not available on Zoom, Chair.
In support. Okay, there's many other testifiers exclusively in support, but no one else has signed up for Zoom or in person. Would anyone else like to testify on SB eight oh nine? Eight oh nine. Okay, seeing none, let me just give you the count on the fifty-three in support and zero in opposition and one comment. Members, questions? Okay, I think for Mr. Cam. See, it's micro, okay. So your testimony states that you plan to reach out, I think one of your footnotes, you plan to reach out to the Office of Enterprise Tech Services to see how the information sharing provisions of this bill would be accomplished. Have you had a chance to do that and what was the result if you did?
We have not had the chance to do that.
All right. Um, let's see, no, let's hear from SPO, so. Okay, thank you very much. Other questions, members? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, next up is SB eight one six relating to due process protections establishes the due process process and immigration proceedings program within the judiciary to provide legal representation to individuals in immigration-related proceedings in immigration courts. First up on eight one six is Rodney A. Miley, Administrator, Administrator Director of the Courts with comments. Jen Kagewana, Council Member for the Hawaii County County Council in support, Sandy Ma, Community and Policy Advocate for Legal Clinic. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee, Sandy Ma for the Legal Clinic. 新年快乐，恭喜发财.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. The Legal Committee, excuse me, the Legal Clinic testifies in support of SB SB eight one six. This bill is necessary to provide services for those appearing in immigration court. To clarify some matters, immigration court is a civil proceeding. It is not a criminal proceeding. And those appearing before immigration court undergo, it is a very serious matter. The penalties in immigration court are as serious as those in criminal cases. You can be separated from your families permanently. People appearing before immigration court may be children appearing alone before an immigration judge. So therefore, immigration court is a very serious matter. And you are not guaranteed an attorney because this is a civil case. And so for this reason, we ask that this matter be funded. So thank you very much for hearing this. And we ask this to be passed out of your committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Nathan Lee, Policy Legislative Fellow for the ACLU of Hawaii. Good morning.
Morning again, Nathan Lee, ACLU of Hawaii in support. Again, just want to, just want to note in joining the testimony that was just shared that there are certain due process rights that are guaranteed to all residents of the United States regardless of their citizenship status. And oftentimes, it's just about getting access to vindicate them. And so I want to highlight from our testimony, there was a national study that found that immigrants who had legal representation in the courts were found four times more likely to be successfully released from detention when they had a custody hearing. And then among those who sought immigration relief such as asylum, those with legal representation were two times as likely to obtain this kind of relief if they had representation. And so I think I just want to reiterate that these people have due process rights that are guaranteed to them and this measure is a pretty common-sized measure to help them get access to the courts to understand immigration law and to vindicate those pre-existing rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Detwiler, Testifying for Hawaiian Islands Republican Women. Morning again.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. I thank the previous two testifiers for clarifying that this is a civil matter. I'm all for legal immigration. If you are in the country illegally, then you're an illegal immigrant. So, you know, we're facing a lot of challenges, the country is, with illegal immigrants. There are many that are here. I'm all for due process as well. But while the bill does not refer to illegal immigrants, I feel it's important to state that if you are in the country illegally, you're an illegal. If you attempt to apply these benefits that are stated in this bill, then I suggest you review Title VIII, U.S.C., Section one, three, two, four of our laws. SB eight one six proposes to provide legal representation for immigration-related proceedings. If you're being detained, there could be other elements involved, perhaps criminal elements. And again, I realize this bill is in reference to civil cases. We are spending our money out of our general funds to support legal proceedings for these immigrants here. Why are we using our funds for that? Wouldn't these funds be better spent on programs for US citizens such as homeless veterans and underserved groups here in Hawaii? Many immigrants who are in Hawaii illegally are receiving government benefits such as SNAP and Medicaid. Again, you know, they should not be receiving these benefits. And I'm curious to know why SB eight one six is fast-tracked. You know, if this is passed into law, it'll be effective July one, twenty twenty-five. Why is this bill being fast-tracked? This bill is ambiguous and lacks critical details to be seriously considered to pass. We're respectfully asking to uphold your oath of office. Please vote no on SB eight one six to protect the citizens of Hawaii. Thank you.
Next up is Amy Agbayani and Andor Patricia McManaman for Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights. Good morning, Doctor.
Aloha. Thank you for hearing this bill, and I'm here representing the Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights. We strongly support funding critical legal representation for immigrants who really need legal representation. We also support the, having the judiciary contract with nonprofit agencies, which is included in their testimony. It'd be more like contracts and purchase of services not run by the judiciary. And I also want to support the amendment presented by the UH. And I also want to support the amendment presented by the UH Richardson School Immigration Legal Chair to be one of our partners and all the uh statements earlier um of those people in support of this bill. Later on, we may want to say that uh many of these uh, a lot of the illegal immigrants or undocumented people actually are not eligible for many of the uh services, but they do pay taxes.
Okay, thank you. Next is Danakol Ramos, Equal Justice Works Fellow for the Refugee and Immigration Clinic. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Uh, my name is Danakol Ramos. I'm with the UH Law School Refugee and Immigration Clinic. Um, I'm one of the immigration attorneys there, um primarily working on naturalization issues and also working with uh veterans who have served the US military but not are not the uh US citizens yet. Um, just to give a quick background, you have our written testimony and support, um just to give a quick background of what we do at the clinic. So we are part of many clinical programs in the law school where we help, um where we work, take on pro bono ca- uh pro bono cases in immigration, whether it's deportation, defense, asylum, naturalization, and we work with law students in a clinical course to work on those cases for us um as part of their requirement for graduation. Uh, as previous uh testifiers have mentioned um in support of this bill, there is a great need and a capacity um for these legal services and to have access for this community. Um, one thing I do wanna specifically mention on our testimony is uh our suggested amendment, which is to ask the judiciary to partner with the William S. Richardson School of Law um on developing a training program uh for law students and also attorneys who are interested in doing this pro bono. So while it is important to build capacity at this moment um for access to immigration legal services, um, we believe that it is equally important to also develop the pipeline to sustain this kind of work so that we have law students and lawyers in the future to continue to wanna be interested in serving and representing this community. So thank you so much and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very much. Next up is Liza Ryan Gill, Executive Director for Hawaii Coalition Coalition for Immigrant Rights. Uh, in support. Well, once everybody who has signed up to testify in person or in by Zoom, does anyone else wish to testify in SB eight one six?
May, may I testify, Chair?
I can't see who it is, but sure.
Hi, it's, hi, good morning. Um, I would just like to um testify in opposition, uh just noting um some of Jamie Detwiler's testimony. I do agree that um it it, I, I just think that our taxpayer dollars shouldn't be going to fund this at this particular time. Um, Hawaii is in such a uh critical point in its history since becoming a state um where we have so many citizens who are leaving the state um because they can't afford to live here. And we also have uh veterans who are not having uh their needs met. Uh, the list goes on and on. Um, you know, children that need better access to education. Um, you know, there's just so many infrastructure problems. Um, as I noted earlier, we've had a a lot of disasters, whether it be the kill away of volcano um eruption that, you know, damaged that fishing um, that boat ramp that's just now getting funded. Or um, you know, the Maui wildfires, which, you know, um, a lot of people have still just not not recovered from or um the, the lockdown measures that um irrevocably damaged our economy. And so I just think that this bill shouldn't be fast tracked, um that it needs uh time for revision. I do respect what um immigrants bring to our community. Um, but this is just, uh, I, I feel a waste of taxpayer dollars right now. And um I think that all of you should vote no and continue to be mindful that we need to support our local community so that we don't lose our local community. Because without the Kanaka and the Kama Ina, Hawaii is really, will be irrevocably changed. And um how can we support immigrants um while denying those people um who, who live in the state? Especially, you know, um the children and veterans and even the state workers. So um I'm in opposition to this bill and thank you for hearing my testimony and thank you for uh letting me jump in.
Uh, there was someone else back here who wanted to come on up. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. So before you start, I did wanna note, just as a chair, if, if this bill had been fast tracked, it would have been on an earlier agenda and July first is the standard when almost all bills, their effective date is July first, so. So go ahead.
Thank you. Well, Lynn Christian, again, thank you so much for allowing me to testify. Committee members for SB eight one six, I want to give you a personal testimony. I just assisted a friend who had to go to court, traffic court, and the judge um asked him to go to a public defender because I guess that's an automatic thing when you, when you testify that you are uh not guilty, when you plead not guilty. So we went down to the prosecutors, uh, excuse me, the public defender's office and he is an American citizen, born and raised in the US. Uh, that place was very packed, as you folks probably know. As I sat there and I listened to the workers coming out and speaking to the participants that were there, my friend personally was denied a public defender because he owned a house, but he is now on disability. Unfortunately, I saw an illegal immigrant come in and they were approved for a public defender. My issue with this is if we have American citizens who are being denied the very core of what we stand for and yet we are allowing illegal immigrants and I'm not against them, but they came into our country and our state illegally. They need to follow the process and they need to become a legal immigrant. Now, that's my issue with this is we need to stop taking care of everybody else and start taking care of our residents and our citizens of the US. So I strongly oppose this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to testify in SB eight one six, eight one six? Seeing now, members, questions? Let's see, was there somebody here from? Nobody was here from the judiciary. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, next up is SB eight forty-six. Relating to emergency powers, this prohibits the governor or a mayor from suspending requests for public records or vital statistics during a declared state of emergency, allows for a reasonable delay in an agency's response to a request as a result of extenuating circumstances. First up on, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to give the final count. Back on eight sixteen, the final count was uh thirty, thirty-eight in support, two opposed and one comment. And okay, so that's, okay, so first up on eight, eight forty-six is Stella Cam, Deputy Attorney General. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Deputy Attorney General Stella Cam. Uh, we've provided comments in our testimony and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Uh, next we have Ryan Yamani, Director for the Department of Human Services with comments. Carlotta Almarino, Director for Office of Information Practices with comments. Douglas Miller for League Women Voters in support. Ben Kreps for Public First Law Center in support. Ted Kofalist, Director of Strategic Campaigns for Grassroots Institute of Hawaii in support. Um, Sterling Marita, President of Hawaii Chapter Society of Professional Journalists in support. Lynn Madison in support and Jacob Winecheck in support. That's everybody who signed up on SB eight forty-six. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB eight forty-six?
Yes, uh, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry. I would just like also to um uh give testimony and support. I um just would like to note, you know, um when emergency orders are um issued, they uh, there seems to have been no end to them. So it creates the opportunity for um this vital information to be suppressed from the public. And I think that um I, 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 I oppose a lot of the emergency powers that I've seen used throughout the years um in, in the state of Hawaii. Uh, I know that they are lethal, but at the same time, I think that um they've done a lot of detriment. And so uh I, I strongly support that um, that this information be released and I thank you for hearing my testimony. Um, and uh thank you so much for um, for your continued uh work to, to rectify this problem in the state of Hawaii.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify in SB eight forty-six on Zoom in person? Come on up. Good morning again.
Just briefly, Chair, um I too wanna testify in support of this bill. It creates a much needed transparency. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else on SB eight forty-six? Okay, seeing now, members, questions? Okay, seeing now, we'll go ahead and move on. Uh, next up is SB eleven seventy-three. This imposes a fee on the total amount of independent expenditures made by non-candidate committee during an election period. First up on SB eleven seventy-three is Gary Cam, Counsel for Campaign Spending Commission. Good morning again.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Uh, Commission has a concern about this bill and the recommendation is that the, the committee defer this bill and.
So I can just hold the mic a little closer. Thank you.
Recommendation, the committee deferred this bill at its time and seeking an opinion from the Attorney General's Office. This bill will uh, this bill creates a fee of five percent of the cost of independent expenditures uh made during an election period. Um, so it, it creates a burden on independent expenditures. And uh, the Supreme Court has held that independent expenditures cannot lead to uh corruption because they're independent. Uh, so, so it might be that this burden may, may be unconstitutional because I can't see how the fee would prevent corruption or the appearance of corruption.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is Anne Frederick, Executive Director for Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action in support. Uh, Susan B. Roberts, Emery Co-Chair for Green Party of Hawaii, also in support. Uh, Beppe Shapiro for League of Women Voters of Wa- of Hawaii in support. Anne Safré possibly on Zoom.
There's still none of them on Zoom.
Okay, uh, in support. Um, there's a bunch more testimony, all of which is in support. I'll give you the stats eventually, but is, at this point, would anybody else like to testify in SB eleven seventy-three, SB eleven seventy-three? Okay, so the total count was uh forty-two in support, zero in opposition and one comment. Um, members, questions on SB eleven seventy-three?
Oh, yes.
Sir, stand one and two.
Uh, Gary Cam. So. How, if this passes, how would you be able to enforce it? Cause, because if it's independent expenditures, it'll impose like a fee on the people ex- spending it?
I believe it's on a, it's on a non-candidature committee that made the expenditures.
Okay, so the people who actually testified in favor like independent women voters, if they went and expended monies to promote voting, they're supposed to pay five percent? According to this?
If, if they are, if they establish a non-candidate committee and the expenditures are independent, yes.
Right, so even if it's to promote voting, there's a court.
No, the, the expenditure would have to um uh be for uh to support a candidate or oppose a candidate.
Okay, but if then they're not independent if they're gonna be opposing or in favor of ca- of a candidate.
So it's independent if it's not done in collaboration uh uh or in connection with a uh the candidate committee. So it can be, you can have independent spending in support and opposition to a candidate. It's just no coordination.
Okay, so like um, like two elections ago or really, okay, the last election, if there were a non-candidate committee who opposed the passage of the marriage equality amendment, they would be required to pay five percent?
Uh, the independent expenditures are for uh candidates.
And not.
Not issues.
Okay, so it will probably be, I, I'm trying to figure out how this works. So it'll, so when the I don't know, Pacific, so I guess two elections ago, when there were all of those expenditures against Sylvia Lou, they would have had, if this bill passed, they would have had to pay the five percent.
If the expenditures were independent at the end of the election period with, when the final report is filed, um, we would see the expenditure, the total expenditures being made by the non-candidate committees. And I get, just reading the bill, we would just tally that up and five percent of that would be the.
Against the.
The non-candidate committee.
The non, okay, thank you.
Other questions, members? Okay, um. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Cam. We'll go ahead and move on to the, the next and I believe the last bill. Yeah, this is SB twelve twenty-five. This proposes an amendment to the Constitution to specify that the standard for voter approval of a constitutional amendment proposed by the legislature is a majority of all the votes tallied. So what this means is that if you don't vote on it, on the, on the, as a voter, you don't vote on the constitutional amendment or you overvote, your vote doesn't count one way, the other is only the people who said yes or no. Okay, so first up is um Alika Valdez, the Valdez, yeah, Valdez for the Democrat, Hawaii Democratic Party in support. Uh, then there's a bunch of opposition, almost entirely, there's a couple of supports in there, but mostly opposition. But uh Mary Healy, you're on again, if you like. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for hearing my testimony. I strongly oppose SB um twelve twenty-five. Amendments to the Hawaii State Constitution should be difficult and only done with the consent of the majority of the voters. Um, our state constitution is the youngest in the nation and opening it up to revisions of this magnitude without the consent of the majority voters, it is an injustice to we, the people. The population of the state rely on our um officials to protect the integrity of the US Constitution, the Bill of Rights, which are sacred to our republic and our state constitution. Um, this excerpt from the bill, the legislature further finds that the manner in which ballot responses are required to be um counted for state constitutional amendment purposes by deeming ballots left blank, spoiled or overvoted as a vote in opposition to the proposed amendment is confusing and may lead to a result of um unintended by the voter, um prudent to the state constitution. The standard um for the passage of the proposed constitutional amendment is twofold. You cannot assume to know the intention of the voter and adjudicate the vote. Actually, the most prudent thing to do would be to educate the voters prior to the election on upcoming proposed amendments and that um a non-vote is a vote in opposition. Um, I reviewed the written testimony and um I just think that if you pass this, um, it's going against the vote, uh, the voice of the people and um it's supporting partisan policy. So I ask you all to vote no on this bill and thank you very much for hearing my testimony.
Thank you very much. I, I do have to comment though that every time this committee votes on anything, we're going against the will of somebody. So it's not a um, it's, nothing's a hundred percent, except possibly civil asset forfeiture, which I mentioned yesterday was the last bipartisan issue. Okay, on SB twelve twenty-five, anyone else wish to testify in SB twelve twenty-five? Seeing now, members, questions? Let's double check. Nope, I'm good. Um, everybody ready to vote or you wanna please us quick?
Ready?
Ready? Okay, we'll go back to the top of the agenda. Which is SB one one four. This establishes presidential preference primaries for the twenty twenty-eight election cycle. Uh, recommendation is to go and pass it with amendments. Uh, we'll accept the Office of Elections suggestion to put in a definition of presidential preference primary in Section eleven one. And we'll blank out the appropriate. and we'll blank out the appropriation amounts and put those amounts in the committee report, and we'll put on an effective date of April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB one one four is to pass with amendments. Chair Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes with reservations. Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Sam Bynum.
Reservations.
Senator Waugh? Excused, measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SB seven twenty-five. This requires a judge to make certain findings regarding defendant's ability to afford bail. It's a JDC single, so we have, in legislative terms, we have a long time to deal with this. I'm going to defer it indefinitely, but I expect to see a, everyone can expect to see a proposed SD one at some point. Okay, now it's deferred. SB seven thirty-three, this proposes amendment to Hawaii State Constitution to establish continuous legislative session with apologies to the introducer of this bill, Senator Chang. I'm going to defer it for now. I do think we have gathered a lot of interesting and useful testimony and analysis, and we'll see where it goes from there. Okay, SB seven seven eight. This is relating to sentencing changes, the age for which individuals are eligible for life without parole sentences from eighteen years of age or older to twenty-one years of age. Recommendation here is to pass with some amendments. Instead of trying to address the the issue section by section, we'll create a new statute in chapter seven oh six to state that no one under the age of twenty-one can be sentenced to a term of life without parole, and this will apply to all sentencing laws. We'll delete sections two, three, and four of the bill to propose amendments to the specific sentencing statutes. In the CR, we'll note that it's not intended to prohibit prohibit life with a chance of parole in a minimum and and a long minimum and possibly, I'm sorry, and a possibly lengthy, long minimum sentence. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB seven seventy-eight, Chair Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes, Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Sam Bynum.
Aye.
Senator Waugh is excused, measure passes.
Thanks very much. Next up is SB seven eighty. This specifies that election ballots issued by the chief election officer, county clerk shall exclude any candidate who is disqualified by constitutional or statutory provision. As I mentioned before, this does apply only to state offices. Hopefully, it will never be necessary, but I think it's useful to have a provision in place should it come up, and it will kick it over to the challenges, go, except for the the Electoral College and the electors, which are handled separately, but are considered state officials, that would kick it to the Hawaii Supreme Court, if someone who's used to adjudicating difficult matters. So the recommendation here is to go ahead and pass it unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendation on SB seven eighty is to pass unamended. Are there any members present? Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing now, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB seven eighty-eight. This establishes a two-year pilot program in the probate court and family court, the first circuit to fund certain guardianship and conservatorship-related court resources in situations where the respondents do not have sufficient funds to pay for one or more of the resources. The recommendation here is to pass with amendments. We'll blank out the appropriation amount and affect the date to April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven, and we'll note the hundred thousand dollar appropriation requested in the committee. That's been requested, and we'll put that in the committee report. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Recommendation on SB eight or nine is to pass with amendment.
Eight oh nine?
Yeah.
It's seven eighty-eight.
Okay, I don't have a seven.
Do we not have a?
I have a seven eighty.
Again, seven eighty-eight.
Seven eighty-eight.
Yeah. With amendments.
So the recommendation is to pass with amendments on SB seven eighty-eight. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing now, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB eight oh nine. This prohibits state or county grantees, officers, and immediate family members of state or county contractors and officers of immediate family members of state or county grantees from contributing to candidate committees and non-candidate committees for the duration of the of the contract. The recommendation here is to pass with some amendments. We'll accept the Campaign Spending Commission's amendment to define owner as someone with at least a five percent interest in the contract or grantee. And per the state procurement office's suggestion, we'll limit the reporting to contractors over the small purchase threshold, which is a hundred thousand dollars for goods and services and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction. Questions or concerns? If not, on SB eight oh nine.
The members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing now, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB eight one six. Establishes the Due Process and Immigration Proceedings Program within the judiciary to provide legal representation to individuals and immigration-related proceedings in immigration courts. Recommendation is to move it forward with a three amendments. We'll accept the judiciary's suggestion, i.e. that they will administer the contracts to provide the services called for in the bill, but they won't perform the services themselves. Because of the First Amendment, I don't think requiring the judiciary to work with Richardson is practical. So whoever gets the contract or contracts can cooperate with Richardson. This is, was a, so this, this isn't really amendment, I'm just explaining why I'm not accepting the Refugee and Immigration Law Clinic amendment. And we'll change the date to April twenty-three, fifty, twenty fifty-seven. And the appropriation is already blank. Questions or concerns? Yeah, did I miss something? So the the First Amendment that I that I mentioned, that the judiciary will not administer the program, they'll just put out contracts for it, the, we'll go, we'll go ahead and use the judiciary's language that was in their in their testimony, for clarity's sake. Other concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on SB eight sixteen is to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Vice Chair votes with reservations. Measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SB eight forty-six relating to emergency powers. Prohibits the governor or mayor from suspending requests for public records or vital statistics during a declared state of emergency. And there's another bill that has already moved through another committee that I believe is more comprehensive than this one. So I'm going to defer this one, and we'll wait for SB, I don't know if we have to wait, yeah, we still have to wait for it, but it's coming here next, SB three fifty-three. So that was deferred. SB eleven seventy-three imposes a fee on the total amount of independent expenditures made by non-candidate committee during an election period. The recommendation here is to we'll change section eleven dash C to direct one hundred percent of the revenues generated by the fee to the Campaign Spending Commission. We'll change the preamble to reflect the focus on anti-corruption with the CSC. And change the preamble to reflect those other changes. I'll put a bad date on it, April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven, and in the committee report, we'll note that we intend to ask the Attorney General about the constitutionality of this approach. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB eleven seventy-three, recommendations to pass with amendments. The members present, are there any no votes or reservations?
Reservations.
Suggestions for Senator Sam Bynum? Measures adopted.
Thank you. Next up is SB twelve twenty-five, proposing an amendment to article seventeen, section three of the Hawaii Constitution to specify that if you don't vote or you overvote, it just doesn't count, it's only the yeses and nos that count. Recommendation is to pass as is. I'm sorry, this is for changing a, for, this is constitutional amendment to change the way that we do constitutional amendments. Recommendation is to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On SB twelve twenty-five, are there any no votes or reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Sam Bynum and also the Vice Chair, the measure is adopted.
Good, thank you very much. Our business is concluded for today. Have a good weekend.